Do I have a motion to open the June 12, 2024 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Kelly Kosa.
Here.
Kelly Kosa and I here. Benjamin Baskin. Jennifer Rafferty. Jennifer Scholz.
Here.
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 Thank you, Michelle. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have CSEA Administrative Contractual and Personnel Matters and Student Matters to discuss.
No.
All three of you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the June 12, 2024 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Kelly Kosa.
Here.
Kelly Kosa and I here. Benjamin Baskin. Jennifer Rafferty. Jennifer Scholz.
Here.
Here.
Thank you, Michelle. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance and we're going to take a moment of silence in memory of Mark Anthony Giordano at the end.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know that many of you may have just been attendance in a prayer service and these are extremely challenging times when we're celebrating and also mourning. So just as a mother and board trustee, I want to extend our deepest condolences as our hearts go out to Mark Anthony Giordano's family and all who knew and loved him. We're all feeling profound sadness. And as a community, we stand together in mourning this devastating loss and I remind us all to reflect on the impact that Mark had on each and every one of you and the lives that he touched. And in times like these, we find strength in our unity and support and that we offer one another. So we need to stand together. Passing it over to you.
There is nothing in the world that can explain the death of a child. But as I think about what has happened over the last several days, several things stand out. First of all, this fabulous, beautiful, loving young man, in the flower of his life, suddenly gone. And that's what we focus on. But I want you to focus on something else right now. It's okay to cry. It is. Nobody has to stop feeling what they're feeling. But this is what I want you to realize. You gave something to Mark that nobody else could. He was only in our community for a very short time. He came in the sixth grade. And do you know what you gave him? You gave him friendship. You welcomed him into your community. You welcomed him onto your teams. You made him feel seen. You made him feel important. And his life was tragically lost, but what you gave him can never be lost. You need to appreciate how amazing you are as a school, as an eighth grade class, as teammates, as teachers, and as coaches. Some children can go their whole lives in a school district and never feel the love and support that you gave to him. And that will be such a comfort someday to his mother and his sister. And there are so many people in this room who have taken care of all of us over the last few days. I'm going to start with our SRO Robbie Bud because he probably had the most difficult moment that a human being can have. But again, I will say to you, what a gift to know that that child was not alone, that somebody who truly loved him and knew him was with him in that moment. I want us all to remember how grateful we need to be to one another for what we gave. Mr. Freed and your faculty and all of the psychologists who were with you, your coaches, what an amazing gesture. On Sunday night, Coach Duraco happened to be at the high school and he sent out a message and you know this because many of you were there and many of our coaches, not connected at all to the wrestling team and the wrestling team, Mr. Duraco, people just showed up. And you know what happened? So many of you showed up just to be near each other, just to remind ourselves that we are good and that we cared for this person, that we loved him. We'll never get over it. I don't want to pretend that it's ever going to be easy, but I want you to be proud. I want you to love yourselves in this moment for being so incredibly loving before this terrible thing happened. It's an incredible place we have created. And when I say "we," I even mean the sixth graders, the seventh graders. You've created a school where people who come from the outside are welcomed in. They find their way. It wasn't because he was a wrestler, it was because he was a human being. So we will never get over this. It won't go away. It'll become easier to deal with, but I don't actually want it to go away and nor do you. We don't ever want to forget those people who touched us, but take comfort in how much you touched him, how much you touched all of us. I will tell you that the adults have drawn a lot of strength from this eighth grade class, watching them care for one another. I also want to single out SRO Joe, who made his way from his home in Brewster to the hospital to be with that mother in her darkest moment. Nobody had to ask anybody to step forward and to care. This is a special place and if he had to be taken, I'm glad it was here amongst people that were kind enough to see him and love him before he was gone. So we will recognize him in the ways that make the most sense. We're going to take a breather and in September, we have a memorial garden at the high school. It's a tough place for me because we commemorate every child or every employee that is lost while they're here with us. And when that eighth grade graduates and goes to ninth grade, one of the things we'll do is we'll bring the entire ninth grade together and we will remember Mark Anthony with a little less pain and maybe a little more joy. But know how much you are loved by the adults around you and know how much you have taught us in these moments. We are proud of you and we will continue to support you and you will support each other. We wish that family as much peace and comfort as they can and look at what our community has done of family in need. You're taking care of that family, not just that boy. So if somebody hasn't told you today how proud we are to be a part of the Harrison School District, let me remind you. We couldn't be any prouder of everything you've done to care for the people around you. So thank you. And now I want you to all take a deep breath and see that smiling face in your head. Try to hold on to that because tonight now, we're going to do something else. We're going to celebrate in this moment, all that you have done. And it is not wrong to celebrate what you have done and still remember, we can do both. So a special thank you to Mr. Freed. Is he here tonight? He's been just an incredible, loving father to all of the children in this school. So I've watched him suffer because like so many of you, the people in this community know these children. They're not names, they're human beings. So Mr. Freed, wherever you are tonight, we're thinking of you too.
Mr. Freed went to the prayer service, so I'm sure he's...
He's going to be here at some point tonight, so we want to recognize him. And now we're going to shift to something more positive while still remembering Mark. Back to you.
Did I go through the minutes and public participation?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to do a little bit of meeting stuff and then we're going to get to the good stuff. Won't take long.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the May 22, 2024 Business Meeting?
Motion.
Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, if we have any public participation, I mean, we know, if there's anyone that would like to speak or please do so by attend, you can make your way up to the podium, state your first and last name if anyone has anything they want to share at this time.
Okay, let's jump right in.
Okay. Seeing none, we will, we're going to...
Accept the presentation. I think there are some people here to give us gifts tonight. Who are they? Come on up, Mr. Shea. Speaking of the eighth grade, yay, Mr. Shea.
Hi, everybody. I'm Anthony Shea. I'm the yearbook advisor for LMK. Over there are the yearbooks, so I'm going to... Dr. Leydwick usually is my designated passer-outer, but he was asleep at the switch. So again, I just want to thank the board of ed, Mr. Freed, Dr. Wall for, we know a lot about our sports program, but I think our yearbook really shows the breadth that we have of all of the clubs as well and it's growing. This year, we added a wellness club. Ms. Riola did that.
Thank you.
And I think the exciting one for this year is our ceramics club by Ms. Tracy and it's got a really lot of support from our kids and they do some really, really amazing things. We had a chess club last year, so the club section is really growing and I think it really gives a lot of opportunity for, especially the sixth graders who can't do sports, to try a lot of different things in LMK. So I'm just going to turn it over to Emma for a minute, just to talk about what it goes in. She's our editor. She came up with the theme, Tuned In Together.
Is it out? Do the kids have it?
They don't have it yet.
Oh, wait a...
So if you may have a child that's in LMK, I'm not naming any names, you need to keep it under wraps.
Okay.
So I'm going to turn it over to Emma. She's going to talk for a brief moment about this. Emma's one of our eighth graders here. Like all of us, we're struggling, so just keep in mind.
My name's Emma O'Malley and I'm the eighth grade editor of the yearbook this year. I think your book is just like a really great program for the school because like everyone's able to really contribute their own ideas and it's just a way for people to be creative and learn about like designing and stuff. Also for the photographers, people are able to get creative with what they're doing and also learn about new things that they like. And yeah, there's just a lot of people there and it's such a great community because you're able to like just hang out, even if like you're not in the best mood that day and you always have such a supportive community, I guess, with Ms. Lona and Mr. Shea as our advisors.
Hey, Emma, do you remember, tell the audience what the theme of the yearbook was? Do you remember?
The theme of the yearbook this year is like Spotify slash like music theme, I guess. So we really chose that theme because of how much the school just loves music and I feel like it's a way for people to kind of express themselves. Yeah.
The middle school yearbook always makes me work the hardest because they mandate that I write my letter around a theme. So the theme this year was Tuned In Together. I just want to remind you of something that I said just a few minutes ago. This is the quote that starts my letter. How many of you remember The Giver? Did you read The Giver? Remember we were talking about caring about other people just a minute ago and here comes the person we've been just talking about? Hello, Mr. Freed, welcome. We missed you. Here's what I wrote. "You and I don't need to care about the rest of them." The giver looked at him with a questioning smile. James hung his head. Of course they needed to care. It's the meaning of everything. So your yearbook, ladies and gentlemen, whether you know it or not, is about the very thing that makes you so special, caring about one another. Good job, editor.
Thank you, Emma.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea and Emma.
Okay. Good to know.
Yeah.
And I think we're going to have a high school yearbook presentation. We're very excited. I was just previewing.
Hi, everyone. Should I hand out the yearbooks?
Oh, sure. Andy, have you seen this, Mr. Nichol?
Want me to grab it?
We'll share for now. Thanks. It was so popular, I heard you had an overrun. More people want it than to forget it.
Yeah, it was really exciting. Well, this year, our yearbook theme was about community and how no matter how far you go, whether that's all the way out to California, I know we have a few seniors leaving to California or Europe or staying here in New York. We are always Huskies. That's a really big phrase here, once a Husky, always a Husky, and that's kind of the theme of our yearbook. You know, we're going so many places, but we always have our home here in Harrison. And that's just what really inspired us to make this our yearbook theme. And I have to say a really big thank you to Ms. Griffo and Ms. Vitarelo. They did an amazing job editing and to all the Harrison administration. Thank you guys for so much support. It really has been an amazing time, these past four years, working on the yearbook. I am really excited to present it to you guys and to the Harrison High School students. And congrats to the Harrison class of 2024.
Here, here. And a high school yearbook is like a full-time job, so congratulations to you for getting through it. It's just terrific.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Now you're going to narrate good news, right?
Okay.
Now you're going to sit and hear how wonderful you are all because there's so much good news, it might put you...
We have quite an update.
Including, we have people sitting up front here. We're going to talk about them in a little while after the good news.
Couple minutes. I'll read as fast as I can. The New York State Dance Education Association has selected Harrison High School senior Evie Raven to receive the 2024 Artistic Merit Leadership and Academic Achievement State Award for New York. This honor is presented to only one student in the state who meets the Artistic Merit Leadership and Academic Achievement award sandals at the state level. It's a very big deal, so congratulations, Evie.
Isn't that great? You can clap for that. That's amazing.
Yeah, well deserved.
Woo-hoo!
We just had the physics extravaganza where all the fourth graders and the four elementary schools take a cute little trip over to the high school to experience physics and they go to various stations and I happen to have a fourth grader who had the best time seeing kids in the high school and just experiencing something different other than her little bubble at purchase. So that was awesome. The senior awards, that was just last night.
It was.
Yeah, last night.
It was an amazing night. Some people were there. Raise your hands if you were at the senior awards last night. Wow, that's a lot of people. One of the most successful academic classes in our history.
And it's just a powerful experience firsthand of the depth of our seniors' accomplishments just across the board, so congratulations to all of our graduating seniors.
I couldn't sleep last night, so I was counting. Before this year, we had never put out more than nine newsletters. This senior class did so much, we ended up putting out 14 because you had so much to be proud of. So hooray for our senior class.
The 22nd Annual High School Science Symposium was held in our High School Student Union on June 3 and 75 science research students in grades 10 through 12, 12 presented and defended their work for all who attended and I was there and I was just blown away, one after the other. I couldn't even get through all of them and some of the titles were so in-depth and just, I mean, these students are just blown out of the water. So that was super impressive. Then we had the, Harrison had its best ever showing at the Somer Science Fair. We had 17 students place in first, second, or third place and just to name a few of our first-place winners, Liam Azar for physics, Matt Carrera for chemistry, Sophia Jonasch behavioral sciences, Beverly Kang, earth and planetary sciences, Adina Naim, behavioral scientists, Chloe Rooney, behavioral sciences, Emily Salamo, medicine and health sciences, and Nolan Simmons, engineering. So congratulations to our young stellar science stars.
I'm not bragging, but that's nine first places. That's pretty good.
You can brag, should brag. Nearly 50 high school students across all grade levels took the American Association of Teachers of Italian, the national contest examination. So it's a nationwide Italian exam that tests students on their language, culture, and grammar knowledge and it's optional, but it's for enrichment purposes. And Harrison's 2024 gold medal winners were actually all happened to be ninth graders.
Unbelievable.
Laura Novak, Gabriela Perez-Capcha, and Emma Shulley. So congratulations, girls. We just had Preston and Purchase the elementary spring concerts, which are always a delight and emotional and seeing these young fourth and fifth kids just on their instruments and singing and it's just such a delight and was lovely. Relay for Life, we just had at the high school. There was a very large contingent of faculty and staff from Parsons honoring the recently deceased Secretary Maureen Savagio and the students worked hard in organizing games and dunk tank, bouncy castles, base painting, and just so many other activities and all funds are donated to the American Cancer Society.
That's a great, are there any teachers that were dumb enough to be in the dunk tank? I'm just, oh, there's one. Mr. Shea. Yay, Mr. Shea got in the dunk tank. I'm only kidding.
Okay, Jazz Night.
Just amazing.
We just had our annual high school, at the high school Jazz Night featuring the jazz band from the middle school was there as well. It was extraordinary night of music as our programs continue to show rigor and joy and showmanship. We also had the percussion showcase where a large number of students who were devoted to percussion instruments, they were innovative, including a tribute to the video game from the 80's Super Mario Brothers, which was super clever and demonstrated extraordinary range of skill in our percussion section. It was awesome. I wasn't able to attend, but I saw a video and it was super cool. I feel like that was more for the parents.
It was fun.
Super Mario Brothers.
Most of the kids know Super Mario Brothers. Just coming back.
Yeah, I guess so. We had writers among us. A celebration of writing was held at the High School Student Union on May 29 and more than 100 students, family members, teachers, administrators attended the event, which included student reflections about writing and poetry reading. So we just have all these wonderful ways of expression for everyone to showcase their artsy sides. It's amazing. We had the LMK Art Show, which included artwork displayed throughout the LMK building and students' dance and musical performances. Under, we had the NISMAs majors. Under Mr. Thomas Bestone's direction, the high school string ensemble earned a gold rating.
That's like winning the sectionals, just to say. Same idea, so. Hooray for our orchestra got a gold rating at NISMAs.
And congratulations to Mr. Bestone and the String Ensemble on this achievement because that is a really big deal. We had our high school marching band represented the New York State and the National Memorial Day Parade down in DC and it was the, it's like the largest Memorial Day event in the nation on Memorial Day, was May 27th. And the band performed songs including Your Grand Old Flag and Harrison Fight Song for the Huskies, marching down the historic Constitution Ave alongside high school bands and veterans nationwide. So before marching, students also visited the World War II Memorial to lay a commemorative wreath in honor of Harrison's veterans.
That was really powerful moment to, for them to lay that wreath and to walk, to march in that parade. I want to thank the, Ms. Lurcher for taking them and organizing that trip. Mr. Royal, I think, also went along. That's a big undertaking, but what a great way to represent our commitment to honoring our veterans by sending our kids to that national event.
Then we had Husky Day. Our fifth grade students participated. It's one of the most significant events supporting the sixth grade transition through activities on Husky Day. So it involves like a thoughtful mix of students from all four elementary schools led through team building and collaborative activities and it's all done at the high school and the games are organized and supervised by the whole PE department. And it's just like an awesome, fun day for kids to get to know each other and highlight, and they're greeted by the marching band and the drum line and it's just like a super fun. It's a big deal.
Can I help out Husky Day? See, we had some people working on Husky Day right here.
The debate team, they're always on my update. Congratulations to our high school debate team on a great showing at the national championship in Chicago. And out of 176 debaters from around the country, Reese Potash placed ninth, Jack Borman placed 21st, and Jack Gesner also had a winning record.
Cool.
Awesome. It doesn't even feel like there's enough days in the week or month for all of these events to take place, but they all happen. We had the coffee house at the high school. Students from grades nine through 12 selected their songs and showcased the variety of their talents and passions and it's one of the most unforgettable nights in our district as young performers share their musical talents and they're so generous and supportive of one another and if they like make a mistake, they're like, start over and it's just for aspiring artists in the community to share their talents. And a special thank you to Mr. Royal and his mom who have stepped in for Mrs. Test through the remainder of the year as she has a life-changing, wonderful time in her life. But the students enjoy every moment of the evening as well as faculty and parents and everyone in attendance. We had the poetry slam at the middle school, presented the original poetry and congratulations to the students for just writing and once again, sharing their creative sides. I'm hearing that at Parsons, the fourth and fifth grade concert was such a massive group of kids in the orchestra. I think we might have an expansion in our theater arts coming up at the high school in the future.
We're going to need a new stage pretty soon.
Yeah, we're going to just need to keep expanding. The Regeneron, the science research students, senior Lucia Lammers and junior Ryo Iday competed as finalists at the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair. Lucia took third place in the Earth and Environmental Systems Division of the competition. She won the Environmental Protection Agency Patrick H. Hurd Sustainability Award at the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair and presented to one of those students demonstrates a commitment to environmental sustainability and stewardship.
But let me just say this out loud. But let me just say this out loud. So your senior, Lucia, placed third in an international science competition. That's the first time that's ever happened.
And we had the Metro Awards. Was that? Oh, Monday night.
Yeah, it was Monday night.
Two nights ago, yeah, Monday night. So the high school spring musical production of Mean Girls, and it was the high school version, received a top honors in the Metro Awards. It was held at SUNY Purchase Performing Arts Center on Monday. And the Metro Awards celebrated the best in musical theater in the region, with 63 schools participating across Rockland, Westchester, Putnam, and Bergen Counties. So Harrison's production received recognition for outstanding production by a chorus, an outstanding performance in a leading female identified role, Jaden Schwartz.
Jaden Schwartz, wasn't he? Yeah, you can clap for Jaden. It's okay.
Yeah, big congratulations.
And our entire chorus against all 63 schools was selected as the best chorus of all those productions. So Mrs. Test and everybody gets a round of applause. They also had the most nominations of any school of the 63. You can say it.
Okay. Moving on to athletics. I told you, this was a
And now it's your moment.
Big update.
Let's have Mr. Galano come up and do that.
Come on, Mr. Galano.
Thank you. And I want to first thank Dr. Wall and the Board of Education for all the work you guys do behind the scenes to make our seasons happen. And to the central administration, Tim Whipple, who did some big renovations to the field, and we appreciate all of that. Because I always say, it takes a village for anything to happen. And without a supportive board and superintendent and central administration, that wouldn't happen. So I thank you guys for all of that. Now to get into the important stuff. I'm up here to recognize the first-ever Section 1 girls' softball champions.
First ever!
Dean Marino, the head coach, has been coaching longer than I've been alive. And it took him a few years to get this gold glove, but he got it.
It's called perseverance, Coach.
So I'm gonna call up the coaching staff, and I want to thank the coaching staff. Many times, girls, you leave the field, and sometimes you're upset, sometimes you're happy. I could tell you, the three of them that are sitting there right now stayed back. Some of it was technical issues with technology. The two older men didn't necessarily know how to use some of the apps. But the three of them would talk, and I'm not kidding, I'm saying hours, and it's not a joke, about you guys and how to put you guys in the best spots. And obviously, they have families and other things. So I want to thank you guys for all you've done for these kids and for the past generations. So thank you, coaches. So I'm gonna call you up. You can go on either side. And then we're gonna take a nice, beautiful picture. So Coach Dean Marino. Coach Nat Acuti. Yeah, bring your, bring your
Bring your awards.
Coach Rachel Pocia. Pocia. And now for the athletes. Adriana Briota. Barbara Jo Capola. Alexia Kazali. Sienna Kazali. Olivia Greco. Ava Gergetano. Madison Mazzella. Madison Miller. Mia Marasek. Gia Pinilla. Sophia Pinilla. Vanula Rollis. My favorite, Ava Tadio. Pitcher of the Year, Gabriela Triano. Olivia Vasti. Jordana Yamtov. And our manager, Jordana's sister, Rowan Yamtov. So congratulations to the entire team. Thank you.
All right, we want one picture with the girls, and I don't want to bring the board up. Stay there. Dr. Leyry's gonna take the picture. Make sure you look good.
Scooch together.
Straighten your t-shirts out.
I don't think anyone can see us, though.
All right, team. Come together.
I know, I'm so proud of you.
Well, I had to write it down. I started, because I just felt like I had it on me. I was like, I'm sure I'll But you had to write it down.
Congratulations, Section 1 champs!
You know I'm gonna stand next to you.
I think I'll stand next to you.
Good work, you two. Nice job. All right, I'm making an executive decision.
Yeah, you guys go.
I think these kids have been through enough. So we're gonna carry on with the meeting. We're gonna later recognize our retirees and our conferrable tenure. But I just think the emotional weight of the group, if you're not, I want them to go home. Everybody hear that?
Congratulations, girls.
Don't you agree? Thank you, everybody. I know it's been a long meeting, but an important meeting. So as soon as those little people make their way out of the room, we'll carry on. You good?
Mm-hmm. I'm gonna go back to the signing.
If you want, yeah.
No?
Yeah, you can.
Well, if I say him, I have to say her?
Yeah, say the signings. Just the signings. You don't have to do anything else.
Okay.
Citro.
What about the D3s?
Just say the total. Okay?
Okay. Okay. We've also had a lot of exciting students sign to move on. So Alexandra Wong committed to the fencing team at the University of Pennsylvania, as well as just this afternoon, Marco Citro, starting pitcher and Husky quarterback, signed his letter of intention for Holy Cross as well to play baseball at Division 1.
So largest number of kids we've ever had sign to play D1 and D3. Am I right, Mr. Galano?
Yeah, we had 11 signings for D3 as well.
So yay for
So congratulations to all of our athletes. Jake Hervitz, Tommy Mangan, and Henry Hervitz, and Matthew Sherman, advanced to Section 1 playoffs. The Huskies tied in golf. Sorry, I didn't say that out loud. Golf. Huskies tied for second in a three-way tie at the Section 1 Championships. Tommy Mangan and Henry Hervitz finished second and third and qualified for the state tournament. This is Tommy's fourth time attending the state tournament, and Henry's second. The Section 1 golf team won the team state championship. Four Section 1 boys were in the top 10. Tommy Mangan finished ninth overall in all-state. Henry Hervitz played well and contributed to the win. So that's pretty stellar as well. Congratulations. Okay. Moving on to your update.
Yep.
Oh, and I just want to say, Aziana, I mean, there's so much happening, but I know we have another two weeks-ish of school, but I hope everyone has a wonderful summer and enjoy some time off. Take a break, do something you enjoy. And we will look forward to seeing you again in the fall. Although, we keep going all summer long. But hope everyone else takes a great break.
All right, we're gonna go to my update. If you want to know how interesting my life is, did you hear every one of those things? I went to every single one of those. So if you think I don't have a good life, you would be wrong. I have a great life. Every time I go, I'm amazed at what our kids are doing because of the people in this room. I want to start tonight by, we do two things tonight out of order. We recognize our retirees, and we confer tenure. We do that at the same time because in some ways, it's the passing of the torch. And the five people that our teachers tonight are gonna recognize at the end of this ceremony are significant in our history. But I like to remind all of us every day, the title in this organization is not what defines your contribution. So tonight, we're also gonna be recognizing our civil servants, who are equally significant in the lives of children. You know, I narrated for you earlier, I would have never suspected that our SROs would have been where they were in a particular moment in time. But we are a community that believes that everybody matters and their contributions matter. So there are two folks that are, three folks that are not here tonight. I'm gonna start with them just because they're not here, and I want to focus on the people that were able to make it. But Preston School is seeing Kathy Scro retire after 23 years as a teacher aide at the Preston School. That is an incredible accomplishment. I will say, if you've ever followed a teacher aide around, oh my God, I don't think I could do that job. Matilda DeRosa was a teacher aide for 20 years at the Purchase School. Please acknowledge her as well. And Georgia Masiola, wife of beloved John Masiola, who used to be the head custodian at our high school, she is retiring from the Parsons Memorial School after 28 years as a teacher aide. But there are two people who are with us tonight. Luigi Lu Ananziata, who, you know, it's interesting, when you think about what Lu does, you only see what he does during the school year. But Lu has also been an active member of our IT department throughout his summer. Sometimes I'd say, Lu, you can't be on a ladder standing on the top on one foot, but he didn't often listen. But he is the person who has helped keep your children safe in this middle school. And after a long time, he's decided to join his lovely wife in retirement after 21 years. Lu, please come up and be congratulated by the board on your retirement from the middle school. You guys should just go out there. You guys go out there. Everybody wants to shake your hand and give you what we think is a really important memento. Can I see your driver's license? No, that's just a joke. That's his favorite. No, you don't get away without saying goodbye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. You're bored? I didn't do that right. Bored? Come on down here, so people have to walk by me. And now, I think, Carol, I don't know how long I have known you, but maybe from the moment I arrived. Where are you? Raise your hand so I can see you. And I know this says Purchase School, but that's not fully true. So when I met Carol, she was an extraordinary, actually, the first time I met her, quite honestly, she was alone in the room, and I thought she was the teacher. She's an amazing, amazing human being who has touched the lives of so many kindergarteners. She's also had to clean a lot of snot in her life, but we won't talk about that tonight. But she spent the majority of her career actually at Parsons Memorial School, and in recent times, transferred to the Purchase School, where she has served with Alyssa for a very long time. You're not gonna be replaced, but we are so delighted. I can't believe it's 29 years. That's a heck of a run. Congratulations, Carol. We used to keep track of where our kids were in college, right? Okay. Well, we have five teachers who have decided enough is it, no, I'm not, that's not what they decided. I got to speak about these people a little bit earlier tonight at the Harrison Association of Teachers Retirement. And I get a little bit choked up when I think about the impact that they have had on the lives of so many kids. Teaching is so much harder than people think it is. You have no idea, unless you've been a teacher, what it is. And the funny part is, everybody's been in the classroom, so everybody thinks they can do it until they're asked to do it. It is incredibly complicated. And we are entrusted with the most sacred thing that you have in your life, your children. And we work you hard here in Harrison. We expect you to continually get better. So I'm gonna start there. You know, I've seen Kelly Pallone as both a teacher and a mother. And the symmetry between those two is very obvious. She cares about her children as much as she cares about her students, as much as she does about her child. And when you come to the end of a career, people sort of like phone it in. But Dennis Cartwright told me a story that is such a credit to who you are as a committed educator, that in the past years, as you've reached the end of your career, parents keep consistently saying, can I please have Mrs. Pallone because of the difference she made in my other child's life? There is no better legacy than to leave knowing that people still thought you were extraordinary. Congratulations on 31 years. Come down here! What is it with you people? Come on down! You can tell Kelly's one of these people that doesn't like a lot of attention, but we're gonna give her some tonight. Well, not in this case. Congratulations. Great job. Okay. I'm sure a lot of people can't believe it. Karen McAllister is another example of how people who are fully committed continue to grow. So as you approach retirement, it's very easy to do what you have always done. I talked about this earlier tonight, but one of the things that we ask of our teachers, it is really hard, and they do so beautifully, so much so that we're gonna be studying it because it's had such a profound effect on children, is the concept of co-teaching. When you're a classroom teacher, it's hard enough to figure out what you're supposed to do, working with another adult in the room. And for the last two years, Karen has excelled, excelled at co-teaching, and gotten even better results, not only for her identified population, but for her general ed population. Do you know what kind of energy and effort it takes to do that as you're thinking about winding down? These are people that demonstrate in every action that they take that your children matter. Karen, congratulations on a remarkable career at the Purchase School. 25 years. Is your daughter here tonight? Is your daughter here tonight? I just wanted to show off our Harrison High School graduate, that's all. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Is she here? No, she's not here.
Oh, okay. I was trying to, so many of our teachers go to send their kids to school I was trying to, so many of our teachers go to send their kids to school here. I'm just mentioning that.
I had to perk when I was, uh, starting.
I know. We had to take that away. Although Mrs. Burkhardt did the same, but we'll talk about that in a minute. I shared a career path of Diane Foroli earlier tonight. I want to, I want to narrate again because it's so impactful. My retired and beloved Michael Greenfield, who was the assistant superintendent here for almost 18 years, was trying really hard to rebuild a business program that wasn't very good. And he interviewed lots of teachers and he didn't find any he liked because he was a really critical human being. And then he met this person who was in the role of a teaching assistant, but hadn't really started her teaching career, and he said to me, this is the person we're going to build our program around. And Diane, he couldn't have been more right. You built a great program and others grew from it, and the program grew around you. And Dr. O'Keefe, who we'll talk about later, helped to continue to elevate it, but it always starts with somebody willing to build the foundation where there is very little to start with. And also, I narrated, because this is a community that cares deeply about people as human beings, Diane went through some profound challenges in her life, and it never, ever, ever daunted her commitment to your children or what she is leaving as a legacy here in Harrison. So after 20 years, Diane Foroli, congratulations. Congratulations. I like your banner.
Thank you.
You're officially retired.
Thank you so much.
Okay. My pleasure. Lisa, where are you? There you are on the aisle. So Lisa started her career as an art teacher at the high school, had a really successful career at the high school, and towards the last quarter of her career, we placed her in an elementary school, and as I said earlier, sometimes you just find your bliss. Mrs. Heims raves to me almost annually at her final meeting with me of how much the art department in her school is a place where kids find who they are. And finding who you are is much more than figuring out primary colors. Feeling the sense that you can innovate and be creative as a child, to have that permission is a magnificent thing and a very difficult thing. And I shared a story, coming out of COVID was really hard for me because I saw kids suffer a lot. And I remember going to one of your classes in the summer, one of the curiosity camps, and seeing kids without masks just so powerfully engaged and happy. And it wasn't just that they were out of COVID or that they were in art, it was because they were with you. And we couldn't be prouder of all that you've done in both schools. Congratulations, Lisa, on your career here in Harrison. Yes, Lisa put up with us for 28 years. And her daughter is also a graduate of?
Harrison High School.
Congratulations. Yep. All right, I saved the most difficult for last, and I mean that in the best sense of the word. I was teasing Dennis Courtright that of all my principals, he's my biggest pain in the neck. He's also a brilliant educator. And I remember very, very early, when I was the assistant superintendent for instruction, and we really were not a very good district, to be frank, that Jennifer pulled me aside and very frankly said to me, I am tired of the physical education department being overlooked, not cared for, not valued, not being given the kind of professional support that they need. And she made it clear that she wasn't going to stand for it. And I don't know that she knew it in that moment, but I believed her. And I believed her because despite the fact that the system at that point wasn't supporting her, she was already an exemplary educator. And her influence on the physical education program and what it does and what it means to this school district cannot be understated. Chris Galano was the final piece of the puzzle to elevate physical education in the way that Jennifer finally, and she was right, needed to be elevated in the way it was elevated, made it happen. When we talked about Husky Day, Husky Day is really about the brilliant teaching that goes on in our physical education program. And that started with Jennifer Burkhardt. And what I said tonight at the retirement dinner, I'm going to repeat it here, and Dennis Courtright, I'm going to remind you, does not give compliments easily. He said to me that the single most important person in helping him transform the culture of the Preston School from one that was enabling to empowering was Jennifer Burkhardt. I don't know that there could be a better compliment. So Jennifer, congratulations on a committed, fantastic career here in the Harrison Central School District. By the way, two children who are graduates of, you complete the sentence. Thank you for everything. We have one more. Stay where you are. Usually I don't do it this way, but it's time. So this school district has been through transformations that some of you experienced and some of you have no idea. We are now among the highest performing school districts in the world, and that's not what makes me proud. What makes me proud is all kids are allowed to participate. This guy right here has been through the worst of it. 18 years on this school board, and in the beginning, I want to tell you, nobody said thank you, nobody thought we could do it, and there were community members who didn't understand that it's important that all means all. Mr. DiLorenzo sat in that board president chair in some of our darkest hours. There was one year where a group of parents decided we were lying about our algebra results. I guess we've been lying for 23 years. We are the highest performing middle school, one of the only middle schools that gives algebra to all kids, and instead of celebrating that, we were attacked unmercifully, and he never flinched. Public service isn't doing it when it's easy, it's doing it when it's hard and when it's right. So I can't tell you how important he has been in the history of this organization, meeting its belief, which is all means all. He never walked away. He could have walked away. So from the bottom of my heart, Mr. DiLorenzo, congratulations on 18 years of public service. That's a lot of free water. I have one person left. You know, I remember when I interviewed Joan O'Keefe and I thought, hmm, she's an interesting person, she's quite demanding, and I was right. And, you know, you heard us narrate tonight all of the accomplishments of the science program. If you're an elementary teacher here and you have been taught something about science via Joan O'Keefe, just raise your hand. Turn around, Mrs. O'Keefe, Dr. O'Keefe. We have an incredible elementary science program. She has written most of the early PYP units related to science. She has created, single-handedly, a science research program with an extraordinary teacher that is second to none. Our science offerings are more rigorous and more inviting than they have ever been. Our science programs are flourishing and among the best in the world because of her relentless, and I mean relentless, hard work. Dr. O'Keefe, thank you for coming to Harrison and for doing all that you have done in your time here. Congratulations on a great career. That was a fast 14 years, wasn't it, Joan?
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Yep. Okay. Come on back to the table, and I'm sure the board is going to have their pieces to say. We're going to do, when we finish this, we're going to do one more thing out of order, and then the room will probably go away, because you don't really want to stay for the rest of the meeting. Okay, you guys want to say something?
Yeah, I know, I have everything.
Yeah, okay.
So our retiree, Mr. DiLorenzo, thank you for your 18 years of service to not only our district, but to the children in Harrison, and we're so grateful for your hard work, your passion, your positive difference that you've made on so many lives, and really for your remarkable service, and we truly wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And I really hope that whatever your next steps, that you are truly fulfilled in the way that I know that you have been here. So thank you. 18 years is no joke.
That's a lot of free water, Dennis.
That is.
Free water.
So thank you, Dennis. Thank you.
Thank you. If I can just make one final comment, it being my last meeting, you know, Lou talked about the transformation and the work and criticism and support, and tonight, we had a night celebrating so much good and so much success. And over the last 18 years, I've had the privilege of watching this district challenge itself every single day to get better on behalf of the children of Harrison, and it has been an honor that this community has put its trust in me and this board to be part of this work. I will take every single experience with me in such a positive light and apply it back into the world. My service life certainly will not end here, but I am so grateful for all of the people that I have encountered, all of the good work that we've done together. I've been very appreciative of all the boards that have come before this one, and it has just been a wild ride, and I hope and I know that this district will continue to rise and challenge itself in the ways it always has. So thank you, Harrison, and thank you, Harrison Central School District.
And I want to say thank you to the DiLorenzo clan for giving us your father for 18 years. I so appreciate it. All right, we have one more wonderful thing to do tonight.
Yes.
So we're going to go out of order?
Yeah.
Give it back to you, Madam President.
Moving on to the personnel report, but I'm going to go out of order to honor, I know we have some very special guests receiving tenure this evening, so I'm just going to quickly list of...
If you're here, you must stand or you do not get tenure. I'm just making that clear. And secondly, you have to remain standing till we recognize all of you. Okay.
Great. Item two, conferral of tenure. A, Lisa Mulhall. B, Timothy Whipple. C, Danny Gonzalez. D, Julia Alberico. C...
Julia? I don't see you. There you are. Okay.
E, Karen Baruch Feldman. F, Anthony DeLaPeña. G, Danielle Duarte. H, Roberto Espinoza. I, Derek Fish. J, Jenna Grossman. K, Natalie Hancock. I, Emily Hart. Just kidding, that's an L. Emily Hart.
No, that's very hard. You're right.
M, Kyle Endorff. N, Shante Mahaja. O, Nicholas Pickle. P, Christine Pickle. P, Christine Provaci. Q, Kristin Yee.
Wait, it hasn't happened! Nothing's happened yet! They haven't said yes. Just be patient.
Do I have a motion to accept item two, conferral of tenure?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Congratulations.
Let's have a break.
We're going to take a quick moment to break to congratulate everyone.
And by the way, that's not official if you don't come back to work on September 1st. We're going to have a break to say hello. Don't go anywhere.
Okay, moving on to the personnel report, I will take on consent aside from item two, which we just reviewed, unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, certificated personnel. One resignation. Three, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Four, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Five, summer appointment, SED clearance received. Six, change of status. B, non-certificated personnel. One resignation for the purpose of retirement. Two resignation. Three, termination. Four, summer appointment, SED clearance received. Five, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. Six, change of status. C, other. One, contracted service provider. Two, approval of agreement. Three, 2024-25 contract amendments for unaffiliated employees per attached. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just one comment. I believe in that, I'm sorry, Dr. Leidwig, I believe in that list of names is our first hire for the New World Language Program, so thank you to the community for supporting that. We're very excited. I will point out that the person that we hired is the person that had to leave when we had to eliminate the program due to budget cuts, so we are so excited to have Marissa Coolahan, who was an extraordinary teacher, returning to our district. Jen Egan, if you're not, if she's not here, but somebody tell her, "Great job, Jen."
And congratulations once again to all receiving tenure. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the administrative report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, approval of memorandum of agreement with the Teacher, School, Aides and Teaching Assistance Association. B, approval of memorandum of agreement with the Harrison Administrators Association. C, appointment of impartial hearing officer. D, acceptance of donation from the Harrison Wegmans. E, acceptance of donation from Friends of Harrison Baseball. F, acceptance of donation from the Harrison Ave School PTA. G, acceptance of donation from the Harrison Ave School PTA. H, acceptance of donation from the Purchase Elementary School PTA. I, acceptance of donation from the Black Bow Giving Fund on behalf of New York Life and its donors. J, Board of Education reorg meeting. K, approval of calendar of Board of Education meetings for 2024-25. L, approval of CSE/CPSE minutes. M, approval of CSE/CPSE recommendations. N, approval of CSE/CPSE annual reviews. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Comments. So I want to thank Mr. Mustroda, Mr. Guterman, Mrs. Ravel, Mrs. Angelata. We are so happy to have the kind of labor leadership that we have. Dr. Tyler happens to be here tonight, and I said tonight at the retirement, one of my proudest achievements, our collective achievement, is that we haven't used a lawyer in our negotiations in close to 17 years because we have relationships predicated on trust. And I'll also say, it does us a tremendous amount of good to know that the last two contracts were unanimously ratified. I think that's a credit to the people on both sides of the table, and I can't thank you enough for all the hard work that you have done along with my team to help us achieve those ends, so thank you.
Thank you. And one other big thank you acceptance, we would just like to thank you, the Harrison Wegmans, Friends of Harrison Baseball, the Black Bow Giving Fund, as well as the Harrison Ave and Purchase PTAs for everyone's donations.
Good to get the vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the finance and facilities report, I will take on consent unless... Moving on to the finance and facilities report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, contract for health services Bedford Central School District. B, authorization to piggyback on Suffolk County contract for boiler and breaching cleaning. C, authorization to purchase audiovisual accessories, equipment, and services from B&amp;H Photo and Electronics. D, authorization to purchase hardware, software, related services, and other Apple branded products from Apple Incorporated. E, authorization to piggyback on educational data services, bid award for tree pruning services. F, authorization to purchase athletic, physical education supplies and team uniforms from BSN Sports. G, authorization to piggyback on Suffolk County contract for computer-controlled energy management systems. H, authorization to purchase technology catalog solutions from CDWG. I, authorization for agreement with Graybar Electric Incorporated to provide electrical lighting, data communications, and security products and related products, services, and solutions. J, authorization to purchase performing arts apparel, instruments, furnishing, storage, and related services for music and arts. K, authorization to purchase maintenance, repair, operating supplies, and industrial supplies and related products and services from Home Depot. L, authorization to piggyback on Suffolk County contract for oil and gas burner and boiler service installation and repair. M, authorization to piggyback on Southampton Public Schools bid award for school supplies and materials. N, authorization to purchase commercial kitchen equipment from Strategic Equipment. O, authorization to piggyback on Southampton Public Schools bid award for science supplies and materials. P, authorization to utilize equipment rental and related services contract with United Rentals Incorporated. Q, disposal of books. R, 2023-24 appropriation transfers. S, resolution to establish insurance reserve fund. T, resolution to make a transfer from the unassigned fund balance of the general fund to the insurance reserve fund. U, resolution for designation of employment benefit accrued liability reserve funds. V, resolution for designation of tax sorcery reserve. W, resolution of designation of liability reserve funds. X, resolution for designation of capital reserve funds. Y, resolution for designation of retirement reserve funds. Z, resolution for designation of retirement reserve funds.
And one would think the alphabet ends with Z, but now we're going to keep going.
Double A, contract for special education services, cerebral palsy. Double B, contracts for special education services Hawthorne Country Day School. Double C, contract for educational services Clearview School. Double D, contracts for special education services New York School for the Deaf. Double E, contract for special education services Summit School NIAC. Double F, authorization to purchase from the online marketplace for the purchase of products and services for Amazon Business. Double G, contract for non-resident tuition students per Sound Shore Consortium Agreement, Rhineac Unified School District. Double H, contracts for non-resident tuition students per Sound Shore Consortium Agreement, Blind Book and Rye UFSD. Double I, contract for educational services, the Center for Discovery. Double J, contract for health services, New Rochelle City School District. Double K, resolution to approve energy purchasing for 2024-25. Double L, services agreement between the Omni Financial Group and the Harrison Central School District. Double M, treasurer's report, April 2024. Double N, treasurer's report, May 2024. Double O, contract extension RFP number 2024-5 Environmental Consulting Services. Double P, contract extension RFP number 2023-1 IT Support Services. Double Q, contract extensions. Double R, authorization to piggyback on Bay Shore Union Preschool District bid award for general building maintenance involving new construction, reconstruction, and demolition. Double S, contract award RFP number 24/25-04 fencing new end repairs. Double T, contract award RFP number 24/25/02 pest management services. Double U, contract award RFP number 24/25-03 floors and floor coverings provided and installed. Double V, contract award RFP number 24/25-05 masonry supplies. Double W, contract award RFP number 24/25-01 relocation and portable to Purchase Elementary School. Double X, authorization to purchase office supply catalog solutions from Staples Contractor Commercials LLC. Double Y, tax sorcery Sunstone Red Oak LLC tax map number 621-04. Double Z, tax sorcery 80 West Red Oak LLC tax map number 621-04. Triple A, tax sorcery 74 Westerly Christopher Reish Revocable Trust Tax Map number 611-48. Triple B, tax sorcery 70 Westerly Eleanor P. Reish Revocable Trust Tax Map number 611-47. Triple C, resolution to increase 2023-24 budget appropriations. Triple D, authorization to purchase furniture, installation, and related services from Irwin Seating Company. Triple E, approval of deduct change order HVAC upgrades, Parson Elementary Schools. Triple F, authorization to piggyback on Byram Hill School District bid award for HVAC on-call annual service. Triple G, authorization to piggyback on Byram Hill School District bid award for janitorial supplies.
It's a good thing you're in good shape. You needed a lot of wind to get through that.
Do I have a motion to approve the finance and facilities report?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I just add one thing now that we've approved that? The amount of work that comes out of the business department sometimes is staggering. And the personnel department was equally impressive tonight. But I just want to take a bird walk because I forgot to mention something that I wanted to mention. We just went through an audit. One of the areas that was audited was payroll. And the person who's also our district clerk and does a few other things is payroll person. And it was a perfect audit. So congratulations, Michelle, and congratulations on getting your daughter married off, another graduate of Harrison High School.
Congratulations, Michelle.
So the business department gets a double A-plus, and so does the district clerk.
Did we say all in favor? Just in case.
Yes, we did. We did.
Okay.
You got one thing left.
Yep. Our next regularly scheduled business meeting will take place on July 10, 2024, here at the Lewis M. Klein Middle School. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
His last and final motion. Second.
Final.
All in favor? No, we are adjourned.
We are adjourned.
Good night.